Welcome to the planning board meeting of July seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Meeting will be held remotely with adequate alternative means of public access in accordance with bill number fifty-eight of the one hundred and ninety-third general court, which extended the governor's March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGL thirty A, chapter twenty until March thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-five. Tried to do it without taking breath. Hey, Pete?
Hi.
Thanks. No, 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 you're not late. Okay, so, um, let's see, plot to order, meeting attendees should mute phones, uh, numbers. I don't think we have any meeting attendees. Okay. Six for landlines unless asking questions, commenting, all attendees should wait to speak until other participants are finished. You know, the basic code of conduct, let's see. Speak one at a time, follow Deerfield Code of Conduct, respectful, considerate, courteous, concise, and recognized by the chair. When we start the meeting, you know, you can just address questions to Peggy since she's basically running this meeting. So I'm going to start identifying board members in attendance. So Andrea Liebson. Here Kathy Vitroba.
Kathy Vitroba here.
Here, Annalee Wolfco.
Present.
Okay, Denise Mason here. So we have a quorum, we're just waiting for a few others. Let's see. Okay, so we're going to be reviewing the FERCOT draft of chapters one seventy-nine. We do have Bob and we have Pete on, so I asked if we can have Bob and Pete go first, they don't have to sit through the entire meeting. So Bob, are you there? Bob? Bob's not there, you lose your turn, we'll go with Pete.
I'm here.
You are, okay.
It just, I was out of the room for a second, but I'm here now.
That's okay, Bob, because we're going to put you at the bottom of the list.
Yeah, I don't want to be at the bottom of the list, I'm hungry.
Okay, so am I. Okay, great. Okay, thanks, Bob. So, um, Bob and Pete, you've met Peggy before, so, all right. So let's see, so why don't we, and just in case someone else, I know someone else was on, but just in case anyone does come on, there is no public comment tonight. Okay, but I don't, I don't see any public people here, so, all right. So shall we start the meeting? And you're muted, Peggy.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, why don't we start with lot width, because hopefully that will go fast and Bob can give us his thoughts and, um, then get to dinner, it sounds like.
Yeah, it's not the lot width itself that is difficult, Peggy. I, I don't think we've ever actually met, but, um, what I have an issue with is under lot width, there's these two footnotes, footnote six and footnote seven.
Right.
That's very confusing, because we, we had an odd-shaped lot. So it's hard to explain, however. Footnote six says, basically boils down to saying the lot has to be a minimum of fifty feet wide, but then footnote seven kind of says, if it's not, then you don't count that area towards
Right.
lot area. So that's what I did with a lot, and then we had somebody object and say it wasn't a legal lot, because one area wasn't fifty feet deep. Although, you know, even the illustrations in the back of the book show how you do that, you don't count that as area. So
Yeah.
how can we clear that up? So it, that's where I have the biggest issue. I, I mean, these are, this, these examples you have are, are great. I, I actually like also that it addresses lot depth, because we don't even have a description of lot depth.
Mm-hmm.
But in an odd-shaped lot, say, you know, where it comes down to a point or something in one area.
Yeah.
To me, it's still a lot, it just isn't fifty feet at that point, and do we, do we throw it away and say it's not fifty feet, or do we go with that? Foot, I think that footnote seven was trying to address that. But it caused a big deal.
Yeah, I guess the question is, if you adopted one of these simpler definitions, like I, I just went down to the third choice, which has both lot width and depth. Then, when you look at your dimensional schedule that has the minimum lot width, you would just go through this calculation, and I don't, I don't know why, um, what the history is behind subtracting areas that aren't fifty feet. Most communities, at least that I'm familiar with, they just include all the acreage within the lot boundaries, the parcel boundaries.
Right.
Don't, and, and that seems to be the most confusing thing, is how to calculate that, particularly for a very complex shaped parcel.
Yeah, like this, this one that's the pie-shaped, I mean, that
Right.
shows. Basically, I think that's what it's saying, is you got to get the minimum lot depth and the, at, at the minimum lot width. Then the rest of it's fine, even though it's, you know, not fifty feet wide.
Yeah. So I don't know what sort of the history is. I've seen for like flag lots, because some communities allow flag lots, where, you know, the lot width, for example, has to be the same frontage as a lot on the street. Um, and then they may not count the access, you know, the, the portion, the, the, the skinnier portion that goes into the back lot.
Yeah, that, that's how they described that other lot, however, it had a hundred and seventeen feet of frontage.
Yeah.
Which it only required a hundred, except for that was pie-shaped, and so as you entered the frontage, you had to go through what was actually only thirty-two feet wide. Like, and that's where it became the issue, was it wasn't fifty feet at that point.
Right.
So they actually changed their lot lines and made it fifty feet, but, um, so that was another tricky one, because if you look at access for driveway access, it said, you know, you have to have a twelve-foot driveway and ten feet either side, so that left you at the thirty-two feet, which is what they had.
Yeah.
So I don't think, I don't consider that a flag lot, like to me, a flag lot doesn't have enough frontage on the road.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know the history of it, but it was super confusing, may never come up again, however, like my thought is, you know, there's not a lot of cut and dry land necessarily. And there's lots of pieces of property in Deerfield with, where there might be frontage, but it gets narrower, and then it opens up into a big lot in the rear, and is that something the town wants to, to have, or do they want to not have access to those pieces of land?
Well, there's the question, I think.
I just do the job, I don't really, and it was just very confusing, like the way I interpreted it versus the way other people interpreted it.
Yep.
So that, that's what I was trying to address, is make it.
And, and if you had to pick a new lot with definition, were you leaning towards this third alternative?
I like this, yes, but, um, yeah, I do like this.
I think it's up to the planning board, if, if there isn't some compelling reason why it needs to be so complicated, and I, I haven't heard one yet.
Right.
And it seems that if we can pick a, a lot with definition or a lot with description that's very clear, it has to meet that, but it, you don't have to go through all the calculations of removing the sections, you know, that aren't the minimum lot width.
Right.
You just have to meet, you know, that lot width based on these calculations, so, I guess, my feeling is that the planning board should propose it, and then if there's some compelling reason why it got so complicated, we can talk about that, but, I mean, those diagrams, you know, I, I needed to, I needed to read the footnote and look at the diagram.
I mean, I don't even, I, I didn't even think the footnote was such a horrible thing. However, there's different, like, just the way different people interpreted it. I mean, I know it's ultimately my decision, but there was pushback, and I didn't want to, you know, say it was a legal lot, because it's such a confusing definition.
Right.
That, it, it's hard to, yeah.
Well, I, I'm, I'm in favor of not having things confusing, and I agree with you, I think it is confusing the way it's presented.
Right.
Then you end up with, you know, arguments and sometimes legal bills, so.
Oh, yeah, it costs
It's much, much better for the planning board to adopt something that's clear and simple that is easier to implement.
Yeah, Peggy, to- totally agree, I can't imagine anyone would disagree with that, and I just wondered, Rachel, since you've been on the planning board for so many years, can you tell me, I mean, have there been big issues in the past with this? You know, what are your thoughts?
Hold on here, am I on?
Yeah.
Um, we, we did have one flag lot recently, is that we talking about flag lots? Sorry, I had a hard time finding the.
Yeah, if you're talking about the one on Gramacki, that's what, what.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that, that's why we're having this whole discussion.
Yeah.
I don't see that as a.
That was, that was not, that was called a, that wasn't a flag lot, shoot, that was a spite strip.
Right, but the way, the way that, that, that's why this whole thing came up, because of those two footnotes.
We did have one, actually, now that I'm saying that out loud. Well, because we try not to have them, right? That, it's not the, that's the difference, is that we try not to have them so much. That was, I'm trying to remember, anyway, it was a long time ago, I remember Max and I had a long conversation about it during the meeting, but not a lot anyway. Sorry, that's my two cents.
Well, I mean, at this point, you know, I mean, does, is anyone, does anyone disagree with having this simpler?
Annalee here, I mean, would those spite strips, they would still be part of the total area considered, wouldn't they be?
Well, in this new version, I think you count all that as area, which would, you know, make the lot, because right, right now, say, once you hit the, the point of this triangular lot that wasn't fifty feet wide, then you couldn't count that towards area, so that may make the lot not buildable. I don't know, it's a tough one, it's really up to what the town wants, it was just very confusing to me, and I was trying to keep it, make it simpler.
Yeah. I think, um, we, you can propose this and see if there are objections, if people are really concerned about the access strip, I'm going to call it.
Right.
Narrow piece, you usually can just, you know, make it clear that that's not included in the lot acreage calculations, um, if you're concerned about a very long access strip. So I can try and add that type of language.
Would we, would you make that clear to say that that access strip has to be a certain minimum width, it would have to be the same as the lot width? Because that was kind of the issue before it.
Well, I guess it depends on whether or not you want to allow flag lots, I mean, a lot of towns allow flag lots, because it's often, if you've already got development along the road, you know, you're just, it's often infill, um, rather than having a whole new area, you know, uh, developed. So in, in this example, um, you know, if we had, if, if this was the street, say you had the street, if we didn't have that extra footnote about, you know, areas with less lot width, this whole part would be considered the acreage of the parcel. And I don't know why that would necessarily be a problem, right?
Right.
It's part of the lot. It happens to be pointy at the end. So obviously, it's not, this isn't going to be the access down here. So this is probably, you know, if you had a cul-de-sac and a, you might have a lot where it went to the point.
Yeah, because our, our bylaw is pretty clear that you have to access through the frontage, so you'd still have to have the right amount of frontage, that, which that one did, it just, the frontage was offset from the lot.
Yeah.
Because there was a piece of land blocking a straight access. And when it came in, even though it had the right frontage and you access from the frontage and had, had enough acreage and everything, it just was thirty-two feet wide, it went from a, a point of nothing to thirty-two feet wide instead of fifty, so even if this is still like the same idea, um, I guess we got to figure that out too, like, even though it has the right frontage, the lot couldn't be narrower than fifty feet in your access or something like that, like something just, if that was somehow in a description also.
Yeah, well, I think the, in the dimensional schedule, it shows where you have to have, you know, a, a minimum lot width. So
Right.
I can look at that and maybe add some language there.
Yeah, because that, that, that's where those footnotes are, so. Looking for it right now, looking through the book here. Yeah, maybe it was just the way, maybe I just had a hard time interpreting it, but.
I think, I think what I'm suggesting is you wouldn't have seven, and you would keep six, but six would be the new definition here.
Right, okay.
And you would have this new diagram there.
Right, and you'd get rid of seven altogether, because that's where it got, I guess.
Yeah, and you'd get rid of seven altogether.
Right, because then it makes it clear that you have to have a fifty-foot lot width, but, but it still wouldn't, I mean, and then if, if it could have some, like maybe under the dimensional table. Or maybe, maybe that's in the, that might already be in the driveway, that you have to have a fifty-foot access strip from your frontage, right? So like it could, your front is put narrow up less than fifty feet.
Yep, yeah. We can certainly, I can find that and reference it, or we can just add it again here.
Right, I just think that, that, you know, would kind of keep the, the, what I think they were trying to accomplish is not allowing it to be narrower than fifty, but be in a much less confusing way.
Right, okay.
Okay, all right, let's see what you come up with from that, and
Okay.
Yeah, I guess that's all I really had to say about it, so.
Great.
Right, thanks, Bob, I guess you can be excused to go have dinner.
I can go have dinner, all right, well, thank you, good to see you, everybody.
Thanks a lot.
Bye-bye.
Wonderful, okay.
Right, I'm going to stop sharing this, and I'm going to see if I can get the floodplain bylaw next.
All right. Did you have a chance to check things out? I think I sent you stuff.
Can everyone see the floodplain bylaw?
Yes.
Okay. Um.
I'm sorry, Denise, I just unmuted, but no, I did not have a chance to, uh, I've been battling some flooded basement somewhere last week or so.
Sorry about that.
Sorry, we're getting there.
Um. So Deerfield, um, bylaw is in pretty good shape, but there are some new state and federal requirements. Um, so you'll see, uh, some changes that appear in red, in order to incorporate some of the new requirements that were put out in this, they have like a, a model bylaw that the state put out. And you would need to have this reviewed, uh, there's a, a floodplain coordinator at the state. Um, so once this is in reasonable shape, we would want to send that along to her for her review and see if she had any additional changes. But one of the big, um, requirements is to have all these definitions. So those have gotten pulled into your existing bylaw. And they want to see all those spelled out. Um, they also have different flood zones that they want incorporated, so I didn't take the coastal areas, I just took ones that, um, are relevant to inland areas. You had already, uh, established your floodplain overlay district in your existing bylaw. Uh, sadly, your floodplain bylaw overlay district map is terribly out of date, nineteen eighty, but they are updating it. Once that becomes available, you would just simply change this date. But these maps are, are referenced, these are your firm maps, and those are the only maps that can be used to identify these areas, that's what FEMA and NEMA require. So it's not, some towns wanted to, for example, put, um, because a lot of these maps are paper, they wanted to put like an overlay, a floodplain overlay on their zoning map. But that might be confusing for people, because only, only the FEMA firm maps can be used for these purposes, and so that's what, um, homeowners and other folks, uh, building inspectors, conservation commissions have to go back to.
Peggy, can I, can I just ask, where do I find them? Because I know we had, um, a floodplain issue, and I had a really hard time finding up-to-date maps.
Well, they're not up to date, that's the problem, they're like second nineteen eighty, uh, they should be on file with your town clerk, if they're not there. Please let me know, I can get copies, they are, you can download them from the FEMA website, they have a whole map collection.
So those, okay, so there is nothing newer than what is currently on the FEMA website?
No, there's nothing newer sadly, and Franklin County always seems to be the last ones to get maps, and, um, they have, they do have the, like, electronic versions of the paper maps, but they're not like a GIS shapefile, so, um, yeah, they're not very, um, helpful.
Yes, that's what I found.
Uh, but they are updating them, and hopefully they will be done in the next couple of years, I hope.
Okay.
And then once they are, then you would just, uh, change the date, instead of July second nineteen eighty, it would be whatever, uh, the new map is, but, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Um, and so section four-three oh-four just talks about, um, that this is an overlay district that's superimposed on your other regular zoning districts, and that the requirements of this section apply. And then you already had permitted uses, which, um, were comparable to the state model bylaw, the one thing I will flag for you, and Whately has asked this, and I don't know that we've gotten a clear answer from the state, but you'll notice that in the permitted uses, it says, um, the uses below, that cause no obstruction to flood shall be permitted, provided they do not require, and I added, non-agricultural structures, because in A, you do have structures, agricultural structures. I will note that there's a question, which is why you should consult with town council. I think you all know chapter forty-eight, section three, um, there's agricultural exemptions, so in the past, things like barns or farm-related structures, um, presumably would have been exempt, but now the state is saying that, um, all development, including ag structures such as barns, should be subject to this new floodplain overlay district bylaw. So this is what the state is saying, these ag structures should be reviewed, but then we have a chapter forty A exemption. So I'm not an attorney, I'm a planner, um, and so we need to get some guidance from town council about the language here.
So, so Peggy, I mean, is this saying that we're just talking about any kind of new structures or, um, previous structures in our grandfathered in, and they have to now conform to the new bylaw?
No, these are for new structures or if you were adding on
Okay.
existing structure. But it just, it would be nice to know the resolution of whether or not the CONCOM should even be looking at a barn that's added, because typically that's, and Pete, you should chime in here, typically is my understanding, you wouldn't be reviewing that. Is that correct? It was an ag structure under the Wetlands Protection Act?
Um, as far as I know, because we ran into this last year, um, and then talking to DEP, that yes, the CONCOM has jurisdiction over any floodplain decisions, whether it's current or add-on or any, anything going on, which, um, yeah, there's a, there's a whole lot of issues in the floodplain, things that you just went through that I have a lot of questions on, and, uh, it's so undetermined, undefined, uh, it really, really needs a lot of work.
Yeah.
Yeah, Pete, as you remember, um, we exempted that guy because he was ag, um, and that was, yeah, they came under three, three-ten CMR. He was exempted because he was agricultural.
But there was a, and Casey on that one, it's like, the, the question we had is, who's agricultural? Because he said he was going to store agricultural equipment in there, but as we were talking, it was more like lawn mowers and such. So is that, when do you define an agricultural use? You know, is it buying a Kubota and putting it in your front yard and never using it, or what's the equipment that goes in there? Um, and is it a storage of equipment, is it new or previous? This was going to be in a takedown of an old barn and then buildup of a new barn, but on the same foundation? Um, so is that new structure, a different structure, and what are they storing in there? And, and really going back to the, uh, the FEMA maps, uh, and we've looked at, I've had two or three this year. Uh, I, they're just so outdated, um, you look at A-one, I think that's what your floodplain district is definition is, is A and A-one through thirty. Uh, a lot of it are just listed under the FEMA maps as undefined. Hasn't been determined yet, um, it's going to be a flood once a year, but hasn't been determined yet. So when we look at that, and then the other question I have is, so when these, the FEMA maps come out, how do the FEMA maps, because there's no great overlay with a mass GIS maps for wetlands and other areas, so how does a FEMA map relate to a, a mass GIS map of the wetlands? Who takes precedence, and can we get a map that actually, um, shows everything at once?
Well, I think once the new maps get released, Pete, then they will be GIS shapefiles, so you will be able to overlay them.
Okay.
So my.
We're still a few years out though, right?
Yeah, we're still a few years out, but at that point, whatever land areas are being shown on those new FEMA maps, those are all subject to this new, this section of, of the floodplain overlay district bylaw.
Yeah. And it, and it's really, uh, kind of a, I got the, the book here, but it's late in the, in the, the Wetlands Protection Act, but it, it does mention that the Conservation Commission has, um, oversight of the floodplain issues as they come up in conjunction with other, uh, town departments, border health, et cetera, et cetera. And basically, it just says that we should communicate with each other, but there's no, um, there's no hierarchy of who does what and, and what decisions are made and so forth, so. Half a dozen times I ran into this over the last couple of years, it's, it's been a complete unknown.
Yep, well, that might actually be reconciled, I just want to go down to the other major change. Is that there's a, there needs to be a designation of a floodplain administrator. They're, they're the ones that coordinate with the different boards, so you can see the building inspector, highway department, planning board, ZBA, CONCOM. Sounds like we should add border health there. That wasn't actually in the state.
Yeah, because sometimes there, it's a, it's in, um, Beaver areas, Beaver dams, and that's a border health issue.
Really, okay.
Yep.
So this might help with that coordination, um, when you have any type of, uh, development proposed in the floodplain. development proposed in the floodplain overlay district. So depending on your community, it could be, uh, the town administrator, it could be a planner, it could be the building inspector or the assistant building inspector. The one requirement is that it has to be a town employee. Though, I don't know how Deerfield wants to approach this, but I think the planning board, um, would want to talk with Casey about this. Um, as a starting point and then have some discussions about, who would be the floodplain administrator?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, but is there training or, um, licensing or anything of that involved or just?
That I know of. Other than when the applications come in, um, this is all the different responsibilities um, of the floodplain administrator. So we, we have had a number of communities ask us to prepare like a application package and like a checklist. And, uh, we're hoping to get that, uh, going with the next round of DLTA funding. We weren't able to do that this year, but we have asked the state if they have these. Um, you know, examples of an application package with a, a checklist that towns could follow, um, but they don't. And their response is, well, you should have been doing this. So I guess maybe other communities that have more development, um, have, uh, these processes in place. Deerfield actually has, um, we go back up, actually has a permit process, which a lot of the communities do not. So you have the uses and then the special permit procedures. So you actually have procedures um, in your bylaw already, which is good. And these are the requirements that you're supposed to be following. And I don't know if there's an application somewhere, but within ten days of that occurring and sent to the planning board, they're supposed to share that with the CONCOM Board of Health and Building Inspector.
Um, what, uh, what section are we looking at right now?
So we're in your hundred, which is your floodplain, your existing, uh, let me go up. Your existing floodplain district section of your zoning bylaws?
Yeah.
Section I was just referring to.
Okay. Thanks. Yeah, I will review that.
Yep, is, um, section forty-three, ten, special permit procedures.
Thank you.
So. And I will say that some towns have asked if they don't, since they don't, didn't have the, a section like this. They have asked the Conservation Commission to do the review because the CONCOM chances are is already doing that because it's subject to the Wetlands Protection Act. Um, but Deerfield has already identified the planning board, so I did not propose changing that.
Well, we'd be happy to switch it over to the cons. How about it, Pete?
Uh, I, I like a little bit more definition first.
Yeah.
How's that? There was a, uh, uh, an article and Peggy's going through it quick, but it just said, you know, we have to get, uh, you have to check with the CONCOM and the planning board and this, that. So you check with them. And then what? Who has jurisdiction? Who has what to say? Who, you check with them like, okay, cool. Then what? So it's a little bit, yeah, and, and I, I really find it, and it's happening, like I have to go out and some meetings later in this week on some emergency things with all the floodplain stuff going on. We really need some things tightened up on this.
Yeah, we do. Because I, you know, there's, there's farmland that has been destroyed. A lot of farmland savages, at least a million dollars of damage, um, up in Conway. I forget the name of the farm. They, they're, they're wiped out.
Grassroots, some, some roots, some roots.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just awful. So, yeah.
Well, these are the requirements that the state has put out to make sure that the town is eligible for the National Flood Insurance Program and the property owners are. So these are things at a minimum that, you know, uh, should be added. So, um, Denise, if you can add to your list of things to discuss with Casey, who should be the community floodplain administrator?
I will. And you know, my recommendation would not be the town administrator. It would be the building inspector or the planner that we have yet to hire.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I'll, I'll have the, I'll add that to my list. Okay.
Um, so, and it sounds like, um, Pete agrees that there should be like an application, um, prepared for this section and a checklist, and presumably that application would spell out what the different jurisdictions are. Obviously, the Conservation Commission is implementing the Wetlands Protection Act. But according to this, the planning board is implementing the requirements of this part of the zoning bylaws. And if there are any conflicts, the two boards are going to need to work together.
Um. Right, because the, uh, information I got back from DEP last year was that basically in the Wetland Protection Act, there is responsibility of the CONCOM for floodplain, uh, oversight. And we don't have it within, I don't think, I haven't read through this, I'm sorry, but, uh, within, uh, the way this is, um, currently, um, stipulated.
So the, you should read through this because I think Denise was suggesting that, you know, you might want to consider having the special permit authority be the Conservation Commission rather than the planning board.
I don't know, I'll have to read.
So, so, you know, Pete, you know, maybe what, you know, the CONSCOM planning board could work on this together because, you know, we're talking an application and checklist. And frankly, I mean, you guys really deal with this a lot more than, you know, it's not like we're trying to push off responsibility onto you, but you know, it seems to make a little more sense, but we can talk about that.
I think that'd be great, Denise. And there's, there's other issues that come into, um, to the whole, the flooding and, and such. So, yeah.
Yeah, we should have a chance to look through that, then we can have another conversation. Okay.
Yeah, so it would be a very easy change. Right now, it just says the planning board shall be, and it could be the Conservation Commission. Which, as I mentioned, other communities are, are hoping, um, and encouraging their conservation commissions, because as Pete pointed out, they're already reviewing these areas for, under the Wetlands Protection Act. So they have a lot of knowledge about these areas. Okay. Uh, anything else we should discuss about this floodplain overlay district bylaw? Any other questions?
I mean, at this point, you know, maybe not. I mean, it's, you know, since Pete, it's been, it's been difficult week for, for Pete, certainly. Um, I think, you know, after he does that, maybe we can have a conversation and have, you know, maybe a short meeting with the cons come in the planning board. And do that. I think that might be a good idea.
Yeah, that'd be great. Um, actually have a CONCOM meeting next Thursday, Denise, if you want to add to it or whatever, but we can do it separately as well.
Well, we could ask right now. If, I know Annalee is her hand up. Um, does that make sense to people? I know we all love meetings so much. That would be the twenty-seventh.
Yes, yep.
Would anyone here be able to, um, come to the meeting? I mean, we don't necessarily have to make decisions that night. So if people can't make it, we don't necessarily need a quorum, but you know, I'm certainly, I'm happy to attend. And what time is your meeting normally?
Uh, starts at six. I haven't seen the agenda yet, so I'll be, but, um, there's a couple of things up there, but it's actually, knock on wood, a slower summer, so.
Yeah. I was just thinking that, and I, I will add this to the agenda.
Okay, is it Zoom or is it hybrid or what? What do you? Are you doing Zoom? Okay, that makes it easier.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think as long as you have, you know, a rep from the planning board, you can have that discussion and then report back.
Okay, I'll do that. And you, I'm sorry, you said six o'clock?
Yeah, it starts at six.
Okay.
And, um, I work with Amy on the, um, agenda, but it, we have to go through a few things, so I don't think it'd be that long though.
All right. If anyone else is able to, just let me know. Annalee, you have your hand.
I just have a question before Pete leaves the meeting. So, but it's unrelated to what we're talking about right now. It's on a different section.
Go ahead.
Um, actually, it's a section, if we're, are we done with floodplain, Peggy?
I think we are, unless anybody else has some comments for me. I think the two outstanding thing is who's going to be the floodplain administrator and whether or not the planning board that's a special permit authority right now will change to the CONCOM.
So my question, um, Pete, we, we are proposing a new section to the bylaws that talks about hiring of professional consultants. And we can maybe go over more of that without you there, but at one point it talks about when professional consultants are engaged by the planning board of your ZBA, and I believe that, uh, CONCOM also hires peer review and whatnot. So most likely we should include CONCOM in this section.
Well, sorry, to become the special permit granting agency under the floodplain overlay district bylaw, absolutely. But do they have other responsibilities under your zoning bylaws? Because this hiring consultant section is applying to the zoning bylaws.
Well, CONCOM, you hire peer review and?
Yes, quite often, yeah. Um, for wetland delineations and, you know, uh, site reviews and, um, all that kind of thing. But yeah, we do, and we try at times to really coordinate between the board so that one peer reviewer could do a number of different things, but, um, our primary look at is, um, wetlands and delineation, um, issues. But it should be added annually, yes, yes.
I guess what I'm saying, Annalee, is that the CONCOM would have their own section in their regulations, or there would be a general town bylaw. And I wasn't, it wasn't clear to me, um, from Casey, it didn't, she wasn't sure whether there was a general bylaw um, that covered all the boards. So it seemed prudent to make sure that this was in the zoning bylaws. So I'm not town council or, uh, an attorney, so I think you would need to talk with, um, Casey and, and perhaps town council about where, uh, the con- Conservation Commission's authority for hiring outside consultants lies.
Well, we always reference a certain section and I can't remember right now, but I thought it actually came from the, uh, Wetlands Protection Act.
It may well.
Yeah, I thought it referred back to there and I'm looking up, um, that we have the, you know, authority and right to do, uh, the peer review on, on, uh, any of the applications and whether it was a, uh, RDA or NOI or ANRAD or whatever. It's, thought it went back to, uh, WPA, but I might be wrong. And Peggy, and, and I won't take up more time because I know you guys are so busy and, but for the other people on the planning board, uh, you mentioned like what the bylaws are in Deerfield, and so there are new bylaws for the Conservation Commission. Um, and over the last couple of years, we have developed, um, a very standardized list of orders of conditions. Um, probably about seventy-five of them that we can pick and choose from, so we don't have to rewrite them and keep them standardized. And I don't know whether any of those should be, uh, a town bylaw, because we use a lot of them all the time, especially for erosion control and, and different items. Or do we still maintain what we're doing on each application? Um, to assess all these, um, additional orders of conditions, uh, which we can do. Um, both on the, uh, yeah, we can do on all of them, but it's kind of almost contradictory on the RDA because you're making determination of if it's applicable or not. And so if you're making determinism applicable on, then why do you add on? You know, orders of conditions because anyways, um, but I didn't know whether, um, and that would be more for, um, the planning board and, and others in, in town to, to think about, do we need any, um, bylaws put in place actually, um, relative to the Conservation Commission, um, versus us putting out these lengthy, 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 um, approvals, um, with a lot of, uh, things going on, which could have been done upfront. Uh, if the applicant knew about it. So that's all, that was just a, a general question.
Yeah, well, I think, I think that's a question to have with Casey, and I, I don't know about the select board, but definitely with Casey, because I know that, you know, our basic town bylaws, that, you know, they need to be changed, they need to be worked on, but, you know, one thing at a time.
Yeah, right. Now, we'll just keep putting out our, our orders of conditions and see how it goes. Yeah, okay.
Okay, thanks so much, uh, Pete, and I'll be there next week and hopefully other members may be able to join.
Great, we'll talk to them. Thanks, everybody.
Good luck with your basement flooding.
I think we're good. I think we're getting there.
All right, thanks, Pete.
Bye.
Bye. Okay.
I should just mention that, um, you should just make sure you don't have a quorum at the CONCOM meeting.
Right.
You need to post it as a joint meeting.
Yeah.
Just make sure it's one or two of you and not.
Right. Well, I don't know if people are rushing to join that meeting, you know, if you are, raise your hand. If not, um, Amy, can you just put it as a joint meeting anyway? If you can come, great. If you can't come, don't worry about it.
Date one more time, I.
It's the twenty-seventh at six PM and it's only Zoom.
Twenty-seventh.
Only Zoom.
I can't come, sorry.
Thursdays are tough for me, but I might be able to call in for the first thirty minutes.
I mean, if we just put it as a joint meeting, at least we cover our bases in case someone decides, hey, I really want to join this meeting. Okay. So if you could do that, Amy, that would be great.
Okay, and, and then, but it's still okay. Obviously, if you don't get a quorum, then you're just off. The CONCOM meeting goes on.
No, it's, it's, it's fine. I mean, I'm just there to, you know, to listen. We can have a conversation, but no decisions will be made anyway. Okay. But thank you. Thank you for reminding, Peggy. That's always good. Okay, so where do you want to go from here?
Casey isn't here, but, um, there was the definition of nonprofit event at the end of the bylaws. And she's going to figure out what um, number it was, unless someone else knows that.
I checked on that. I spoke, I spoke with, I spoke with Carolyn today on our select board. And I asked her that. I said, we don't have information. What does that definition, what, what, what does that mean? And she said, basically, it was, it's anything, any nonprofit, for instance, churches, um, the police, could be anything in Deerfield, um, could be, uh, the Deerfield Craft Fair, anything that is a benefit to the community. We waive the fee for that. And that's basically it.
Yes, but it also says and shall require a special permit from the select board pursuant to article blank. It's currently blank.
Oh, geez, okay.
So I need to fill in what
Okay.
Article of the general bylaws.
I will find that out.
Permit is issued under.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll do that. So to I missed that part. Okay.
So I'm just going to go through the list of outstanding items, and then if we have time, we'll go back to the second draft of the zoning bylaws, see if there are any questions about the changes I made. Um, we had talked about flexible development. You know, should that get deleted or get left in? Um, I guess I don't really see harm in leaving it in, and since zoning changes are always touchy. I guess I don't really see harm in leaving it in, and since zoning changes are always touchy. Perhaps, uh, given all the other changes, it's best to leave it right now. I understand it hasn't been used, but it's just another tool in the toolbox, so. I think for now, I probably leave it in. Um, another simple one is now that, hopefully you all had a chance to look at the new uh, the proposed official zoning map that now has the adult use overlay district on it. Um, there's a black and white old graphic in the back, I'd just like to get rid of that. If that's okay with folks. Just adding.
I actually showed that to Bob one day, the new map, and he thought it was great.
Awesome.
I thought it was much better.
So I'm just gonna get rid of that old graphic. Clean up the bylaws a little bit. Um, and then the other thing that we still had outstanding um, was whether or not in the use table, you wanted to cap the size of retail. So we looked at some building size examples, you know, like Big Y in Greenfield and Yankee Candle in Deerfield. Um, so some, some communities, if they're concerned about big box retailers, they sometimes put caps on um, the size of retail outfits, but I don't know um, whether Deerfield wants to do that or not, but I just thought I would raise it, so we just need to make a decision. We need to make a decision about whether you wanted to propose a cap or not.
I think so. Well, we only have one, is it just one district that we can have anything large, and that would be the C-two district, is that right? Ladies, ladies, okay, okay, sorry, sorry if I call you ladies, it's, I'm not being disrespectful. You know, I, I did this thing, I, I was looking, I was looking that up today, and I found this, it's called the In- Institute for Self-Reliance, and it has a community protection policy kit, a store, store size cap ordinance, and so it um, there's a model ordinance, oh wait, no wait, no, what is it?
So the, the really big one, the sixty thousand. Thousand with no cap is just in the planned industrial and in the EPD. The C-two district goes up to sixty thousand.
Okay.
I think the last time we talked about this, people weren't too concerned, because there wasn't a lot of room in the planned industrial, and there wasn't any room uh, much room left in the EPD, so I think we've kind of thought it might be a move issue, and that, but that's not to say that, you know, there couldn't be redevelopment at some future point. But for right, how it seemed like a unlikely event that you would get another large use in there, so.
Well, let's hope not, but. But, you know, I mean, I was looking to see, because sometimes it's like, it's hard to really think, well, how big is that store, what's the footprint? And I think, is it saying that, um, shoot, they have a couple of different towns in here. And it's like Dharma Scott of Maine, the um, it bars stores over thirty-five thousand square feet, and the population there is only one thousand three hundred and fifty-two people. And a lot of these stores, um, Ashland, Oregon, they bar retail stores no more than forty-five thousand square feet, and their population's twenty-one thousand, so I thought, that was sort of surprising, so they're really trying to keep it down. But, and I look, the average Rite Aid store is thirteen thousand square feet, so, you know, I mean, it gives you frame of reference of how big they are. Best Buy, thirty-seven thousand square feet. And a football field is fifty thousand square feet, fifty-seven thousand square feet, so.
So I guess the, the question is, is the C-two, the sixty thousand square feet, is that good?
Yeah, and, and Lee, I mean, I think of square feet, but also sort of cubic feet, we're not considering height here.
Well, the height's determined by your dimensional schedule. So let me just look at that quick.
I mean, those stores typically are just one single floor.
Right.
I mean, unless it's um, I don't know, some department store, which I couldn't imagine being built.
So the maximum building height in all your districts, except for the EPD, is thirty-five feet, which is like one and a half, maybe two stories, and EPD goes up to forty-eight feet, so that one allows a taller building.
The square foot, the, the um, the footprint, or does it refer to the actual floor space? Because if it's the actual floor space, then if you put on extra stories, that's adding. If it's just the footprint, yeah, then you've got an issue.
Um, so your dimensional schedule has a maximum lot coverage.
Okay.
So um, it would be determined by, the size of the building, you know, would be determined by several things. One is the maximum square footage allowed in the use table for retail uses, the maximum height defined by the district it's in, and then the maximum lot coverage that it could cover.
Well, I'm just thinking, if it's square feet of retail space, then that counts the second and third stories, the potential second story.
Yes, presumably if it's usable retail space, if it was on a second story, it would be counting towards that.
Okay, that's.
But you don't usually see too many retail stores.
True.
With more unless they're, you know, a, a larger department store like a Macy's or, you know, sometimes they, those have two or three stories, but.
IKEA, New Haven has two.
Has two, yeah.
It's highly unlikely that they're gonna build anything like that in our C-two district. I mean, I don't, you know, I would be surprised.
Okay, so we'll, we'll leave it for now.
Yep.
Okay. Um, and I'd like to hold off on talking about public outreach and just go back. Do you want me to pull up the second draft of the bylaws?
Are they? You wanna go over the uh, co- consultant thing first, so is that?
Sure.
And I just want to ask, um, before we leave the meeting, um, what I emailed about earlier, which is um, now suddenly escaping my mind, but I didn't want to uh, Peggy, the email I sent you earlier today. Oh, about the sixty day, about, yes, our time. I, I, yeah, I definitely want to get that in just at some point before.
Why don't we discuss that once I get these uh, pulled up? Hang on just a sec.
Thanks.
All right. Uh, so what Amy was uh, referring to is, I guess, in your site plan review section? And, let me see if I can scroll down to that.
Fifty-four, forty-five.
Yeah. We've got all the participants there. Sorry, hopefully I'm not making you all dizzy. Don't look till I get there. Things go with and by.
Oh, it's such a pain to navigate these things, and I do it all the time, it makes me crazy.
Just a little hard when you're doing share screen. All right. So this is your site plan review section. Um, and if you go down in the procedures, it talks about the application, um, and then the review by boards, and we're changing the review by boards to twenty-one uh, days to give them more time, and then it talks about the hearing process. And the hearing process, the decision um, is, is supposed to be made um, within ninety days of the application filing date. Um, site plan review doesn't have a specific section in the zoning bylaws, uh, chapter forty-eight of the zoning act. So there isn't specific guidance, but it does for special permits. And typically, that ninety days is from the, the date of the public hearing or the close of the public hearing. And this one is ninety days from when the application was filed. And so that makes it kind of compressed, if you had a long public hearing process, planning board may not have a lot of time for writing the decision. Um, so I think Amy's suggestion was, why? What was the reason for this, and would the planning board prefer to have it uh, be running from when the public hearing? Which would give you more time to um, prepare your decision and get it filed.
I think it makes sense to do it at, you know, at the end of the public hearing, because we're, you know, we're having a public hearing where we're, you know, we may have it, you know, a few months in row, we may not end it, so that would make it really ridiculous, so to me, it makes sense to have it at the end.
Yeah, I mean, for me, it's just sort of a, an administrative nightmare, in that you have to get special permission to go beyond, and I just, you know, I, I can't see any good reason to limit us, you know, why would you want to limit the amount of discussion that you have, I mean, obviously you don't want to drag things out, but it just seems to me, you want to make sure you're thorough, and why put up roadblocks? Um, and potentially, you know, leave yourself open to having to start the hearing all over again, if you didn't get the right permission.
Okay, so I can make that change.
You suggest sixty days at the end of the public hearing?
Not ninety.
It depends, uh, some towns have a shorter timeframe, the special permits, it's, it's ninety days, but if you wanted to do sixty days, you could do that if you, you know.
I, yeah, I mean, I would be perfectly happy with sixty from the close, I just ninety from the start, to me, is it limits the amount of discussion you have, and then it puts me up against the wall of I'm helping to write the decision, then I'm stuck trying to get it out, you know, if you took a sixty day, or, you know, so yeah, I mean, I, I have no problem with, if, if you start from the end of it being even forty-five, I mean, I think I can do that, although I, I guess you want to leave yourself open to, if you have questions for counsel, I think, you want to leave yourself some time to be able to get your counsel to look at things.
Yeah, I think sixty days is, is reasonable, if, you know, if you feel like you can get the decision done in that time, it sounds like it would give you more time than what's currently happening.
Yeah, yeah, I, I would greatly appreciate it.
Okay, so we'll make that change for the next draft.
Thank you.
All right. All right, and Annalee, you wanted to go down to the new section on hiring of consultants.
Is that sixty days, I'm sorry, sixty days?
We get down to this new section. Okay, so rather than renumbering things, I just added this as a new section in your administrative part of your bylaws, so it's in the article five administration. Um, and there's a new hiring professional consultants, so if the uh, CONCOM does take on the floodplain overlay district, we would add them here. Uh, but right now, it's the planning board or ZBA, uh, ZBA does special permits, and also I don't know if they ever hire people for variances, but anyhow, and then these are some of the requirements. In terms of the state, um, having a special account set up uh, to manage these funds, and what the reporting requirements are, and then a very general section on the who you can hire, so the list is very broad, professional engineers, planners, landscape architects, well, wildlife scientists, lawyers, designers, other appropriate professionals. There's an appeal process if the applicant is unhappy um, with who the planning board uh, selected. Um, and that's also in accordance with the, the state guidance. So this basically follows what the state requirements are for hiring of outside consultants.
Okay.
Annalee?
Yeah, question uh, fifty-eight, twenty, do we need or want any guidelines in terms of the amount of fees? You know, which then ties into the special account, I mean. Yeah.
I don't know how you would do that, because it would really depend on the project that was coming in, and what type of consult you were hiring. So, you know, if it was a very complex project, presumably, you would get an estimate from an engineering firm. And then that would be the information you would provide to the applicant about what it would cost for that assistance, right, because it's at the expense.
Yeah, that's what I do, I put out a request for proposals, um, people get back to me, and then I present them to the applicant, and yeah, I don't see how you could cap that, because, you know, a huge, you know, sunny days was huge. That was, you know, and the fee is, you know, as long as it's reasonable as by engineering standards, but I, yeah, I don't see how you could cap it, or.
Or specify it ahead of time, it really would depend on the project.
This is An- this is Andrea, I have, I have a question about um, the list of expenses that will be borne by the applicant. And I was surprised by the um, term advertising, um, so if we advertise and have a notice of a public hearing, are we expecting the applicant to pay for that?
They do, that's what they do now, that is, that is our procedure, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I'd go back to fifty-eight, fifty, it ties into what Amy was just talking about with the actual um, selection of the um, of the consultants. Um, as she said, right now, we usually create a list of, say, three potential consultants, and then the applicant selects it, which the, the consultant, which to me has always felt to be a little bit uh, you know, one hand greasing the other, um, what you've mentioned in fifty-eight, fifty, is that the consultant shall be chosen by and report only to the to the boards, planning board or ZBA. I like that, I like that a lot more, so, but I'd like to hear what other people on the board think. Is that common, or is there, is there a common way of going about it in other towns, Peggy?
Um, the towns that I'm familiar with that have this section, it's the consultant selected by the planning board of the ZBA.
It seems to be, that seems to be much clearer, I mean, it's always felt a little bit sketchy, because then the the consultant is sort of reviewing the people who select them, and oh, oh my, you know, if this is
Well, I, I mean, the, it's, yeah, um, the point is, they, they are paid by the applicant, and you do get, you know, really different um, estimates, really different.
Yeah, well, that's the applicant's issue.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, you know, the point of it being, we can't let the applicant, we, we only send the request for proposals to people we trust. So, you know, we, we have a list of, of uh, consultants that, that we feel do a good job. And I, I don't know that we've ever had a prob- you know, since I've been here, I haven't seen a problem with a consultant siding with, with an applicant, if anything.
I think, I mean, I think this Rachel. And I think that it just often, you know, one time time bond is reviewing it the next time. But they know each other. They've worked on other projects before. And so sometimes I think from the public's point of view, or we've seen the same consultant. But it's just a familiarity, I think, that sometimes is very jarring for public to see that kind of, you know, first name usage, et cetera, et cetera. You've seen somebody again and again.
And Peggy, you said in in other towns, because this is the only experience I have is in this town, but in other towns, the the boards choose the consultant and they don't.
They have similar bylaws, so the boards are presumably choosing the consultant. I don't know how it works in practice. I don't get involved in local permitting decisions, but.
I certainly, as as Rachel was saying, Sally again, that you know, the coziness between the applicant and the consultant that the applicant suggests selected at times feels uncomfortable to me.
I don't know. I, you know, we've worked on two projects with, oh, God. It's terrible. Berkshire Design and then also.
VHB.
VHB. Well, VHB is such a huge company. I mean, they've got so many different, I mean, we're working with VHB for complete neighborhoods. We work for VHB for for Vesh and also for Sunny Days. And I'll tell you, I love working with them because John Furman can speak, so everyone understands what the heck he's talking about. So you know, that's sort of nice. I don't know. I mean, I I personally don't have a problem with that, but I mean, I don't want to get to the point where I'm not trusting anybody.
I feel like, yeah, I feel like people's feet were held to the fire pretty well, actually.
What did the rest of the planning board think? Everyone speaking at once.
I'm sorry. Well, this is Andrea. I'm, I mean, I'm thinking about how many firms are out there that we could potentially be in touch with, you know, we're a small area. So maybe the the choices are are more limited. I don't know that for sure.
I guess the 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 change would be if you request proposals from three consultants, then it's not the applicant's decision which of those three get selected. It would be the planning board or the ZBA's decision. That would be, I mean, you could still, you would still, you know, presumably want to have, you know, qualified consultants, right? So if you're sending it out to folks that have good qualifications.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say at this point, and this may change in the future, but I send out to at least ten because we're getting so few. Everybody is so busy. I'm lucky if I get two. And so it's sort of like, at this point, I have to cast a wide net because otherwise not, you know, we're not going to have anyone to do peer review. And that, yeah, I mean, it hasn't been a problem having too many proposals and that might change in the future, but this is just like from a practical standpoint where we are at the moment.
So I think, you know, if you get the two or three proposals in and the planning board selected a consultant and maybe they weren't the least cost consultant. You can see that the grounds for the appeal is limited to the minimum required qualification. So you know, I'm, I would expect that the applicant would probably want to go with the least cost proposal and maybe that's how they select. Whereas the planning board might want to go with a consultant that might be a little higher in cost, but they feel that they have better qualifications or so. I think that would be the perhaps the change from how things are working now.
Well, and it puts a lot more on the planning board. So then the planning board has to review all the applications and hopefully be able to make an educated decision on who would be the best one.
Or the planner. The planner would be reviewing those. Station to us.
Well, until we have a planner, that's on us.
Yeah, this is Emily. I was going to say something along those lines that I'd like us to get to a place more comfortable enough and then we can lean on the planner to do some of this, but it feels like we need to create bylaws that are sustainable for us, the planning board or volunteer board. And then when we have a hired planner, like, I don't think would they be doing something wrong to say like, I want to review more applications for this process in the future? Like, does that now go against the bylaws or can they just do that as part of their purview?
I think, I I think what you, if you typically have, you know, two or three proposals come in and then you ask the applicant, you could still ask the applicant, which of these three would you, you know?
Sure. Yeah.
Recommend, right? But then the ultimate decision would be the planning board. So if they disagreed with that.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, Denise, I can tell you, you know, between Casey and now she's got a lot of experience and I'm feeling like I'm starting to know, you know, it's like we get to know who we work with so we can help you out with that, you know, we can use our own experience.
Yeah, so this is Andrea. So I I wonder if we should remove the line that consultant shall be chosen by and report only to planning, well, the planning board or their administrator.
Because, why Andrea?
Because this is, as Denise pointed out, this is putting an additional task onto the planning board that it has not been doing because the staff has been doing that.
But that's what it says, and or their administrator.
So you think if that's and and, okay, so if you think that covers it, that's okay. And are you comfortable with that, Annalee? Or do you want to be more involved in choosing?
I think is, to me, I think it's from a plan, a clear lines of expertise, I I believe it should be the planning board who selects. Because it feels that the planning board is the one, as as Peggy was saying, who is looking at, I mean, we certainly would take cost in consideration, but we're primarily interested in what are the qualifications? And if, as Peggy says, you know, we want to have input from the applicant, we can have that, but I'm more interested in the in the qualifications and that we're the ones who slide down.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. I think I would like to leave administrative staff in because, again, we tend to have a long, you know. You guys come and go, but we have experience, like I said, Casey has a wealth of experience with the different people, so.
It would be the recommendation of administrative staff with the decision at the planning board or ZBA.
How about in collaboration with administration?
That's nice.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll duke it out with you, Amy.
Okay.
I know, I just need to make a note of that. My hard copy. So maybe I'll just put in collaboration with their administrator or planner? Or town planner?
I think administration is fine because that would be Casey or Amy or the planner, right?
Okay, yep.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I think that works.
All right. So let me just run through the list of changes I made and then we'll talk about the public hearing process.
And I have a couple of questions, too.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, I had a question. Let's see, it is thirty-seven twenty-five where it has performance bond. And then it says go back to sections thirty-four hundred, thirty-eight or fifty-three hundred. When I went back to, I know, sorry.
I saw that. I looked at that recently. Completely wrong.
Well, no, so when I look back at thirty-four hundred, it was driveway regulations and I thought I don't understand a performance bond under driveway regulations.
So tell me again the section you're in, Denise.
I'm on I'm on thirty-seven twenty-five. It says in granting a special permit under sections thirty-four hundred, thirty-eight hundred or fifty-three hundred, planning board shall require performance bond to ensure compliance. And so it goes back to section thirty-four hundred. I thought that's driveway regulation, so I don't understand why we would have a performance bond.
Well, you do grant a special permit under there, so I don't know whether you ever have tricky driveways or common driveways where you want to make sure that they're properly built. But we can certainly delete the driveway section.
I, yeah, I don't know. I just wasn't sure.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah. I mean, when I looked at that, I thought, because both references seemed really odd and I thought, is that leftover from like an old numbering system and nobody updated when the numbers got changed?
Yeah, thirty-four, thirty-one and thirty-four, thirty-three, as you can see, don't exist.
Yeah, that was.
So I went searching for sections that required a special permit.
Yeah.
That's what this is referencing.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry. You have updated that. Sorry, I'll shut up.
That's okay.
And then fifty, no, fifty, you know, that the the other one made total sense, of course, which was solar. What was the other one?
Fifty-three. Thirty-eight hundred was solar and then fifty-three hundred is.
Special permits.
Your special permit section.
Right, right. Okay, okay. So it was just the thirty-four hundred. I was confused.
So do folks want to delete the driveway? Section, okay.
No.
No.
Keep it. I mean, why, why remove it? We've had a couple of long driveway permits. We've, like, it's we've never needed it, so, but just because.
We didn't ask for a performance bond.
But did we need to?
There there are only two driveways that I remember since I've been on the planning board. One was for Natalie Blay. It was more, oh, no, two. There were a couple, over five hundred feet. Then we need to have the special permit. And we just had one.
Yep.
No big deal.
So do you, would it help if I said the planning board may require?
Yeah, that, yeah.
Decide whether or not it's.
Yeah, may, that's fine.
That sound?
Well, it's, you know, I mean, okay, and then it's probably better to leave it. So if we ever have that, at least we have some leverage to say it's in our bylaw. So, thank you, Rachel.
Okay, but when Natalie did hers, there was blasting and there was so much concern over the blasting, if you remember. It turned out much to do about nothing, but God forbid, that would be more.
Yeah. Three, eight, nine, five, four. I had one other question, three, eight, nine, five, four. Okay, this, why the heck?
So just to recap, so thirty-seven twenty-five, we're leaving section thirty-four hundred in, but we're changing instead of the planning board shall require, the planning board may require. You can exercise your judgment.
Okay. Okay.
Peggy, say the number again, thirty-five, oh, thirty, which one?
It's thirty-seven twenty-five.
Thirty-seven twenty-five, yep.
And it says rose languages in granting a special permit under section thirty-four hundred, thirty-eight hundred or fifty-three hundred, the planning board now will say may require a performance bond to ensure compliance with the requirements of this section.
Yeah.
Thirty-seven twenty-five.
Okay, thirty-eight, nine, five, four. And then after that, I just one had one last question and, you know, we're sort of dealing with that now with Next Amp and Eversource for the for the landfill, I mean, or transfer station, we're going to be putting solar panels on that. So when we've been doing big projects, we've been asking for a bond. And the last one, I think, on on Sunny Days, we asked for our attorney recommended one hundred and twenty percent of, I think, the value of whatever they're doing. But when we talk to, there's something in here that says something about not municipal. Where the heck is that?
Is it in the solar section? What section are you in?
I'm, yeah, the solar and it's thirty-eight, nine, five, four. Getting the scale. Financial sure, surety, surety, I don't know how you pronounce that. Is it surety?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. And we have that, we have that for different solar rate on set right, which totally makes sense. So I did shoot. I did ask about that. I, where the heck did I put that?
Yeah.
Okay, I did speak because I was a little confused about that. I spoke with Carolyn today and she said we can put that as a as a condition that it goes, it's going to go back to the select board and that they need to do that. Because if you recall, I know this is going to get a little off base for tonight, but if you recall at our meeting, we did ask about that and they said that they had already had a conversation with the town administration. She doesn't seem to recall that, so I guess we can take that up at the next meeting, but.
What what are you asking for a change in this financial surety section?
No, you know, I'm sorry. I thought it had something about, there was something about municipalities that it didn't.
Well, the section, the last sentence is such surety is not required for municipal facilities.
Thank you. That's, that's what, yes, that's, I forgot to underline, yes. But so I'm thinking is that considered? Is that considered a municipal, it's, it probably isn't a municipal municipal facility because we're just leasing the land. So we're the owners, we're the less see.
So it would be if the town decided to put up solar panels, that would be the difference, whereas this is, this is a project we're looking at is different.
Okay, no, that's fine. I just wanted that clarification. Okay, thank you.
All right. So the other substantive changes. Annalee had asked me to look at the sign sections. And there were some discrepancies. So I just consolidated everything into the existing sign section, section thirty-two hundred. So you'll see that there's a reference in the planned industrial section to go back there and it very clearly laid out. It already addressed the planned industrial district in the sign section, so just pulled in some of the other requirements from the planned industrial section of the zoning bylaw. So it's all collapsed in one place and works. Casey had asked that the building inspector be changed to building commissioner. I added a new definition for family. Hopefully folks.
Could I just for a minute go back to signs? I'm sorry, a question under thirty-two twenty-one, and I think it makes sense, but it talks about in the small business districts, C one, two signs or other advertising devices. And I imagine that's not too vague, but I don't know what those are. Section thirty-two twenty-one. Other advertising, and again, maybe that's the level of vague vagueness that we want, but I don't know. What are other advertising devices?
Well, well, it says later that no blinky lights kind of thing would be permitted.
Right. Which is nice.
It might be those little like
Sandwich.
The rolling, exactly, sandwich boards or the the little rolling gizmos that people have.
All right, okay.
Or even a, even a like a, you know, political style signpost-y delios.
Okay, that's fine. I mean, I just was like, oh, I wonder what those are.
Yeah, I don't know. But the folks had mine. Yeah, I don't know, um, but the folks had mine when they drafted this section, but.
Anyway.
So far.
Good.
So I, I have a question that, um, hasn't come up. I don't know if this is the proper time to ask it. It was about, um, EV charging stations per, uh, number of spots, um, in the lot. Is that going forward, or would it have to be, things have to be changed? I'm thinking about the school parking lots, um, even, uh, Treehouse parking lot. One, you know, electric vehicle charging station for every fifteen spaces. That seems like a lot. I just wondered if that was a standard for some.
Well, I tried to find a standard, um, and, um, the bylaws that I've worked on, because we're a rural area, doesn't really address this, and there was a request to add something. So this would be going forward for new parking lots. Um, and assuming that, um, EV vehicles really take off, which hopefully they will to improve quality, um, one out of fifteen, I think it was, hang on just a sec.
Thirty-one forty-five, yeah.
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 Is about six to seven percent of the parking lot spaces. And then the question is, should you have charging stations in all of those? Well, if everyone is driving an EV car, it would be really nice if there were more than just one lonely EV charging station in a big parking lot. So I don't know, there weren't any, like, you should have at least six percent, you know, or you should have twenty-five percent, because twenty-five percent of the vehicles driving around will, you know, be electric vehicles. There wasn't that type of guidance.
Um, so I'm wondering about the, the Leary lot, for example. I, I mean, don't we have two charging stations now, uh, installed, and the, the lot is not yet?
I think they're adding, aren't they adding some?
Yeah, they're looking at, I, I know the last discussion I heard was, um, one point five, or one, one, one point five was, I don't know, whatever. The one point five for fifteen, or something like that, or I thought it was less. I mean, they were trying to, I don't know. Do you remember Andrea?
No, I don't. So, so that, that question is, do we, do we say for new parking areas? I mean, I just wonder if people will look at that and wonder if that has to be, um, inst-, you know, instituted now in existing.
We can't, I don't think we have the power to go back and tell people that they need to add that to their parking lots.
That's pre-existing non-conforming.
Okay.
Yeah.
A grandfathered, you can't hold somebody responsible for previous building based on current new. Okay, so, and you don't think that it's necessary to add new, for new parking areas?
Well, if you had a re-, redevelopment, so say you had a vacant property, and there was a parking lot there, and now there was a new, presumably you would want that new development to put in these EV charging stations. So I don't know if you want to say, in addition, new parking areas should include. I think, you know, this is kicking in for, um, new development or redevelopment of areas, so.
Well, that's exactly, yeah, that's exactly what the Leary lot is. That is an existing parking lot, and now it's going to be turned into a real parking lot. And so we do have EV chargers, and I, Annalee, I don't recall how many, but I thought they were putting in more. But the, the meeting is tonight, right now, when we're having our meeting, so.
But I assume you would want, in that case, you've got a new use, right? And a, a redone parking lot, you know, hopefully landscaping is being added if it's.
Yes.
A huge.
Yeah.
New asphalt.
No, it is, it is.
Right.
Yeah, there's, there's a whole landscape plan. Once again, Berkshire Design. I'm still working with them.
So Andrea, are you okay with roughly six percent?
Yes, my, uh, my concern was just that people would look at this and think, oh dear, now I have to add, um, uh, EV chargers, but if that's not the case, that's fine.
Okay. Yeah, I think this is applying to new uses and redevelopment.
Okay.
Okay. Um. So I did add a new definition for family, and we talked about increasing the, a number of units allowed for multifamily up to four. Um, so I added that. Um, I pulled in the new accessory apartment section that got approved by town meeting, and updated the use regulation schedule. And also, there's actually, you can see right here in parking, there was a, three spaces for a single family with an accessory apartment, so I changed that. I added the pharmacies that we talked about, with or without a drive-through window. The EV we just talked about, and then hopefully, um, uh, you took a closer look at the new official zoning map. And, uh, the one change that was requested the last meeting was to change it from historic Deerfield to Old Deerfield. So it wasn't confused with the organizations, one of the organizations in Deerfield. So those are the, the major changes. So are there any other things that folks would like to go over?
Just one last, one last thing. And I, I know there's, there's definitely, you know, a concern about, and I sent, I did send that out to everyone. I don't know if you guys had a chance to look, so I just did it today. But, you know, the whole thing when we did, when we did, um, the contractor, whatever, with, um, Treehouse, and people were really concerned about the hotel part. And I think the intention was not to have a big hotel, but may, maybe a smaller boutique, which I don't think is going to happen anyway. But I did, once again, I spoke with Carolyn today about that, and, um, you know, we don't want things to be so restrictive, but she was, she was talking about boutique hotels. So I sent you, I looked up, and I sent a couple of different definitions of boutique hotels. And typically, they're between ten and a hundred rooms. Of course, we could make it however many rooms we wanted to. And it's, you know, it's, it's not like Ramada Inn, it's much smaller. And that's, I think that's something that would probably fit in with the town a little bit better than a big Ramada Inn or whatever. You know, another, what's that thing down there, the red, red roof, which is.
I mean, like, the Wheatley Inn would count as a boutique hotel.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, red roof is just is one more, one problem after another. You know, the type of, unfortunately, the type of place that it is. We've had a lot of, um, drug-related issues there over the years. But at any rate, so we've got this, you know, it's, um, you know, differs. It's a, a hotel, smaller upscale luxury hotel. It doesn't have to be a luxury hotel, but it's, it's just that we're differentiating it from a large chain hotel. Plus the chain hotels, we don't have room for them anyway.
So this is, uh, in the tourism overlay district section.
Did it, yeah.
Four-nine-five-four uses, rather than just saying hotels, it would say boutique hotels, and then you would add a definition for boutique hotels.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what others think, but I think that that would, that would probably, um, put a lot of people at ease with a, a more, uh, we're defined, you know, a better definition than just a hotel. Because we don't know what that means.
I like that idea. I think it also would protect us in the future, potentially, if we wanted to pass something like that.
Yeah, I mean, we don't want to eliminate it. We want, we don't want to make it so restrictive that people, you know, I mean, people say, well, you know, what about our taxes? Well, you know, we, we want to have things that, you know, people that pay taxes, but we don't want something that is not going to, once again, fit in with the character of the town.
Yes, and remember, these, these are by right uses, so you don't have any review. There's no review going on, so.
Right.
Having, addressing the scale issue, I think, would be important.
Mm-hmm.
I'm just looking right now, um, where your hotel.
I mean, I just looked up quickly, you know, definition boutique hotel.
Yeah, I was just in your existing use table where, where you address.
Oh, okay.
Is there a risk of us getting slammed the other direction with like, being against big business or NIMBY, like, is there like another, I just want to think through the lens. Will people get mad at us for saying we don't want a certain type of business in our town?
Well, that's why I was looking at your use table, and I'm, honestly, I'm not seeing hotels in here, which is kind of odd.
Wait, which, okay, where, where are you Peggy?
So I'm in, I'm in, looking at your use table, twenty-two hundred.
Okay.
To see where hotels, because I think the response would be, well, if they don't fit in this boutique category, they can still come in for a special permit, or say, plan review. But I'm trying to look down the list and find hotels, and I'm not finding it right away.
Hmm.
In which case, we should add it.
No, it's there. I.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's, you know, I, I know you brought that up last time, and I, and, you know, it's a potential issue.
Does anyone else see where, I'm, I'm looking and see commercial for hotels. Am I dismissing it because it's late?
God, I feel like I'm seeing it too in my brain, and now I can't find it. So I, I'm noticing in the parking space area, it talks about inns and bed, bed and breakfast. So an inn rather than a hotel?
Um, so usually you would have different definitions. So inns are often classified as historic structures. Um, and then hotels are, um, a specific definition.
Okay, so.
Hotels often have definitions too, so we could add.
So it's up forty-nine fifty-four. And by right uses in the, um, within the, um, and it's number four.
Yes, but right now I'm looking in your use table to see.
Right, but so I think that's the only, I don't think we have it other than that spot.
So we should add it to your use table.
Correct, that's, and I think that's where Denise is pointing to, that that's a whole, that, that, this whole, this is where that bylaw kind of got plucked in, and we, this is a good, um, clarification.
Yep.
All right, so I'll add hotels, and do you want me to add inns? Yes, hotels and inns. And then the question is, do you also want motels?
I'm sorry, also what, motels?
Motels.
No.
No, okay, so we're going to add hotels and inns.
You know what, so, but it, this is by right, so this is, this goes back.
No, 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 the TOD might be by right. In your zoning bylaws, in your use table, I would not recommend in having by right hotels.
Agreed, agreed, so why in forty-nine, I see, this is under, this is under tourist, got it, got it, got it, got it. You know, I see TOD, I think, Town of Deerfield.
Gosh.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
So Peggy, there's an ordinance, I, oh God, when I was twenty-one years old, I lived out in Palm Springs, California, for, I don't know, like, half a year or something. They had an ordinance, ordinance that you could not have any motels, so they named it a hotel, even though it was a motel. So that, some, that's how they got around it, but it was still the same, you know, basic motel six. So I don't, I, I don't want to leave any window open for that.
I think what we can do is have a line of motel and have a definition and say, no, 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 I guess.
Yeah.
All right.
That would be good.
All right.
Were you doing something in the hotel that you don't want people to do in Deerfield, Denise?
Um, possibly.
But you would have a special permit process, so you could have a hotel, and you might have a chain, but you would just have a review of it and make the decision, rather than allowing it by right.
We, okay, the bylaw that we just did a couple of years ago, and shoot, what's it called?
Oh, the franchise bylaw?
Yes, did that include hotels? So you can't have any, that have more than three someplace.
Form-based, so it's not those, yeah, for me, and it didn't say you couldn't have them, it just meant that, it, you, you, if you go back.
Right.
It's not, they're not barred, they're just asked to work better with the community.
Right, well, but it, you couldn't have more than three. For instance, you couldn't have a Ramada Inn or a Holiday Inn, because they have more than three, um, three hotels.
Oh, each of them, right.
Each of them, so it, it, it narrows the scope down to ones that are more, um, you know, just independent. I don't know.
Well, you could, you could have one Ramada Inn or one Holiday Inn Express, right? Right, your franchise, you couldn't have any?
No, um, well, with formula-based business, it primarily addresses the external appearance. And that, um, has to do with, um, any, what is it, any business that has more than, um, five or six at all in their franchise.
It was, it was three.
Uh, yeah, I can't remember, okay.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know, you know, that gets tricky too, because that's a franchise. But, yeah, if it's still a Ramada Inn, it doesn't matter that it's a franchise, there's still more than three Ramada Inns in the world. I mean, it, it was an attempt to, you know, probably not have, uh, places like Dollar General.
No, it was, yeah, or attempt, not necessarily not to have them, but have more control over what they look like.
More control, and, and also where they're located, too.
Okay, well, let's talk about where you want hotels, inns, and motels. I assume hotels and inns are okay in your C-one and C-two district by special permit?
I think so. Yeah, Annalee, do you still have a question, or your hand's still up?
Excuse me, I have a question with tourism overlay, so when you have a chance.
Okay, and then motels, we're saying no. Yes?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So just to reiterate, hotels and inns might be allowed by special permit in the C-one and C-two district, and motel's not in any district. Okay. Annalee?
Um, yeah, um, we have a note from Peggy saying that, um, as far as tourism overlay district is concerned, planning board might want to talk with, uh, select board about some legal concerns that members of the community have raised. And, um, there was a conversation with the select board, I don't know, you know, probably a year ago. Um, and the consensus at that point with the select board is that they, they didn't want to do anything with the, with the Tourism Overlay District, because it hadn't been used yet. The, the crux of the matter is that the people who raised the concerns felt that, in fact, the town was sort of in, uh, a difficult position legally. And I can't remember why, um, and so we wouldn't want to wait until there's someone else who is testing that bylaw. It seems to me that the first thing we should do is have our legal consultant review, I don't know, the questions that were raised, and look again at the Tourism Overlay District bylaws, and see if there's any reason to make any change. I, again, it was so long ago, I can't recall, except the, the questions that were, were raised were fairly specific. I sent them to Peggy. I don't know, Denise, if I've sent them to you or not. But in any event, I think it would be, at this point, we did have, you know, a year ago, we had a conversation with select board, and they said, no, you know, let's wait until somebody tries to do something with it.
My recollection, Annalee, was that was when Jennifer Gannett was here. I, I don't remember the select board saying that, but, you know, I think, I think.
Trevor.
Oh, well, I don't know. Once again, that came in, because, um, that started the whole conversation because of this, because of Treehouse. And, you know, putting that in, that they could potentially have. And I think they thought about maybe having a small boutique place, you know, people coming to concerts, they'd have a place to stay overnight. And once again, you know, I had that conversation with Carolyn today, said, hey, what about? And, you know, it was just, the intent was not to. And, you know, it was just, the intent was not to open it up to big hotels. So I think tonight, I think it's a good conversation. We are defining what it means. So I, I, I think I'd like to go a little farther than just hotels and C one and C two and have a a more specific definition.
Well, let me send you again, whatever the concerns were, because again, I can't remember them, but it might be something worth looking at. Talking with people online or offline.
Well, and also, you know, I did say that we wanted to, um, have a joint meeting with the planning board and the select board on these because that's what, you know, we talked about last time. So I did mention that today. So I just want to make sure that we have all the points that we want to talk about for the select board. And again, I talked to Peggy about before the meeting started and, um, I know she's dying to come to that meeting. So maybe we can have it a little earlier than normal, um, just as a part of this, a select board meeting. And if we can, you know, have have the questions that we want to talk about the tourism overlay. Okay, um, I'll find out the definition of nonprofit, you know, prior to that and I don't know what else.
Yeah, so my suggestion was, you know, that the by right uses are also not subject to any of the performance standards. And I think everyone should probably, if, if they're being allowed by right with no special permit or, or site plan review, then thinking about whether or not there should be some performance standards. It may not be exactly the ones for the manufacturing processing, but you know, you've got some key concerns or traffic generation, hours of operation and or hazardous material and all those performance standards don't apply to this whole list of by right uses in the TOD. And so I was just suggesting that folks go back and think about that carefully. So even if you're going to allow by right, should you also be thinking about some performance standards?
Right.
That seems really smart.
And I would also look at the list of by right uses again and think whether or not a special permit or site plan review might be advisable. So even a boutique hotel, it's got a hundred rooms or however you define it, it's going to have presumably traffic impact.
Yes.
And so
Yep.
Anyhow, I think it's worth having that discussion with the select board.
Yeah. I agree. I mean, it, it basically has, it has the same kind of impact, um, the same thing I was looking at for, um, for the retail establishments. I mean, the, you know, the same kind of questions. You know, how much of an impact and traffic impact will, will it have?
Right.
But.
And the commercial recreation is pretty broadly defined. So I don't know if there's some commercial recreation uses that people might not be excited about that are now allowed by right.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes.
Ross, here we come.
Alright.
Okay.
Um, I think unless there are other questions, we've covered everything that I wanted to cover. And the last thing is, um, next steps are you all meeting with the select board and hopefully I can join that, that to talk about the TOD and maybe making some adjustments. And then I have some changes, um, to make, uh, for kind of a the next draft, which I would hope we could call the public information session draft. So um, at least a lot of the communities I work with, rather than going right to the public hearing, which, you know, there's all kinds of legal notices and expenses associated with that. To have a public information session. So people can come and look at what's being proposed and have input. Um, um, and see if, if, uh, the general consensus is that, um, they like what the planning board is proposing and, and things are on the right track, or whether there's problems that you all should know about before you get to the public hearing.
Yeah.
Yes?
That's good. Excuse me. So I can check with, um, check with, I don't know, with Chris, with Casey, whomever, and the select board as to when we could be put, because it would make sense just to tag onto a select board agenda. Does that make sense?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, so let me check with them.
Can I just, can I just say one, one thing too? I think that we might, Peggy, I'm sorry, but we might say, uh, like, I think the tourism overlay district is a big, that's a big chunk. And I, I'm concerned that we, we've just made a lot of great changes and I don't know, is it kind of wish it was the other way around, but do we want to separate these two or it's just makes sense to do it all at once? I don't know.
I think, I think Rachel, I was already thinking about separating it. So you would present kind of the housekeeping stuff.
Right.
Which is, you know, changes and the hiring of outside consultants. And then you would have the flip plane overlay district by law, because there were significant changes there.
Yep.
Conservation subdivisions. So we could have the TOD as a separate
Mm hmm.
Change.
Okay, good, good, okay.
So that if that was getting too controversial.
Yeah, right.
You could just decide that that wasn't worth pursuing right now. So I would think that you probably have several warrant articles, one for what I'm going to call housekeeping, you know, wrong numbers.
Right.
You know.
Definitions.
Definition, you know, those things. And then any section that had major changes, like the conservation subdivision design and the flip plane overlay, that those would be separate warrant.
Got it, got it. Good, good. Thank you. That, that helps a lot.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So if the TOD thing, if the select board's not supportive of changes, um, or, you know, maybe that's just minimal changes, like adding the boutique hotel and adding a definition there. Um, but I think, I think it's worth having the discussion about you know, what, what exactly is in the by right use list?
Yes.
And even if you don't want to require a special permit or site plan review, do you want to have some performance standards that apply to it?
Mm hmm. Right.
It seems also that the density of this work is just huge. And so being able to compartmentalize different aspects of it for the public, all of us, is a little bit more digestible. And what is almost standard status quo in multiple communities versus really some of the things that are super specific to Deerfield, especially the tourist overlay district, that by right is huge, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I'll check and see select board meetings. Hey, Amy, when are the select board meetings? I know they're Wednesdays. I forget which dates. They seem to have a lot of them.
Oh boy, you know, I don't know because I have never involved in them. So I don't.
I'm not sure which, which typically was it the first or the second or I, I don't remember. Um, I'll check with, I'll check.
Okay.
To see.
And you should find out if they have a really busy agenda, they may want to have this as a separate.
Right, I'll ask.
Together.
Okay. I'll, I'll check with, I'll check with Carolyn because she's the chair now. I'll check with her tomorrow on that. And then, um, yeah, if she thinks it's crazy, then we'll just, you know.
You can also just hold off on it and just, you know, kind of have an internal discussion of what you'd like to recommend to the select board and take it up at a later date.
That's true.
If they're too busy.
Yeah, well, you know, it's.
If you're worried, you know, because sometimes as I think folks have pointed out, if something is, uh,
Yeah.
That might be difficult to get through if, you know, they may it may make the other zoning changes, you know, more difficult to get through. So.
Right. I'll, I'll check with them. I know it's been a little busy at town hall because there have been some people out for various reasons. So, um, I'll check on that.
Alright.
And then, um, yeah. And then I'll also, I'll get answers for, you know, the nonprofit article. And there are some things that you pointed out in, inside, I'll, I'll get answers to some of the other questions.
Great.
But in the meantime.
The public information session, I would expect that you wanted to hold that in like early September. August isn't the best month.
Yeah. Yeah.
For getting attendance. Um, so maybe you can we can pick a date to hold for that. It could be part of a regular planning board meeting or a separate, separate meeting.
Okay.
Depending on what you'd like to do.
Okay, that sounds good. Um, shoot, what else? I was going to say something else. I don't remember. I don't know.
Alright.
Yeah, I can't think I thought went right out of my head.
Okay.
Oh, okay. No, so, okay, before, before we have that meeting with the select board, again, if everyone go back and read this first, so we have our own questions. So we're all prepared for that meeting. And I'll speak with Carolyn tomorrow and see if we can get on the agenda and I'll just, if we can, then, um, I'll send out the dates and hopefully everyone would be able to attend. If they do it in, you know, as a regular meeting, they may be able to do it a little earlier, you know, it could be separate meetings. So we'll figure that out.
Yeah, I'm looking, I think, oh, select board, well, July eighteenth, obviously, and I see one for Wednesday, July twenty sixth.
Okay. Well.
Alright.
July eighteenth, that's tomorrow. That's a little early.
That's out.
That's not happening.
Twenty sixth, I don't, well, okay, right now, let's take a poll. July twenty sixth, would people be able to attend? No, okay, no, Annalee, you're out of town. I know that. I can't, let me, before I speak, let me check.
I am like solidly confident I could be there.
Okay. I could, I can be there.
Rachel.
Thumbs up from Rachel. Thumbs down from Kathy.
Yeah, I won't be able to be there. The twenty sixth and twenty seventh is tricky.
Well, if it's Denise, Rachel and myself, what about Andrea's checking? I mean, that's three.
We need four.
Yeah, I can.
Kathy Sylvester.
And I can do the twenty sixth.
Okay, so that's up to four of us and maybe five with Kathy, Kathy Sylvester.
Oh, wait, so wait, I'm sorry. So who's the four?
Andrea.
Denise, Andrea, Rachel.
Andrea. Rachel, that that's three.
And you.
Hmm?
Emily, and Rachel, Denise.
Oh God, I'm sorry, Emily, jeez.
Did you forget about me again?
I'm so sorry. Hey, yeah. It's been a long, long day.
Like the regular meeting. But this is only if they can do it.
If they can do it. If they can't.
For sure.
If they can't, I'll send out a text or an email asking you about another date.
Right. And it might even be worth just doing it for a quick meeting too. So nobody needs to be there for a long time just to get this on their radar. Because I'm sure that that's not.
Yeah, and to find out whether there's support.
Right.
Changes or if this is a non-starter.
So I'll check tomorrow. I'll see if it's possible. If it's possible, I'll send an email out to all of you and say, be prepared to ask questions. And, uh, we'll do it. And if not, we'll do it another time.
Sounds good.
Alright, okay, so let's see, um, is there anything else? Hey, Rachel, I'm sorry, just one last thing. You said at our planning board meeting last week, you said, oh, that could, that could be real quick. We could talk about it. I have no idea what it was. And if you can't remember, I'm not going to.
My brain is gone.
Okay.
I've turned into a pumpkin.
Well, I think we all have. Alright.
But I would, I would motion to adjourn if that was.
I knew you were going to do that. Okay.
That's my job and I'm doing it.
Second.
Thank you, Annalee.
Second.
Okay, I'm, take a vote. Andrea?
Yes.
Kathy Trava?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Emily, yes. Annalee, yes. Denise, yes. Okay, Peggy?
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Peggy.
Yes, thank you, Peggy. It was really great. Okay.
Thank you.
Really pretty. We'll get in touch.